Good evening. Welcome to the Tuesday, November 16th, 2021 Tingsboro School Committee Meeting. My name is Becky Stanton. I'm the Chair of the Tingsboro School Committee. This open meeting is being conducted remotely by Zoom as posted on the town's website, which identifies how the public may join. Additionally, all meeting materials are also available on the town and school websites. Please note that this meeting is being audio and video recorded, and I call this meeting to order. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative for attendance and record-keeping purposes. Julie Gassucci?
Here.
Jeff Bo?
Here.
Tony Tonarella is not here tonight. Rob Mullin?
Here.
Ryan McMahon?
Present.
Justine Puma?
Here.
And our student representative, Grace Shambly?
Here.
Dr. Flanagan?
Yes, hello. Good night. Good evening.
Dr. Branco?
Good evening.
Mr. Messina?
Present.
And Mr. Pollitt?
Present.
Great, thank you. Did I miss any panelists? I don't believe I did. All right, moving on to Agenda Item Number Two, the Approval of Meeting Minutes. I will seek a motion to approve the minutes of October 19th, 2021, School Committee Meeting Minutes, and the Executive Session Minutes of October 19th, 2021, Executive Session Minutes not to be released at this time.
I'll make that motion to approve the minutes and the Executive Session Minutes.
A second.
That was a motion by Julie and a second by Jeff. Is there any discussion? And we'll take a roll call vote. Julie?
In favor?
Jeff?
In favor?
Rob?
In favor.
Ryan?
In favor.
Justine?
In favor.
And I am in favor. That carries 600. Next, we'll move on to Citizen Time. To participate in Citizen Time, we ask that you please raise your hand within the Zoom meeting so that we can provide you access to speak. You will be required to state your name and address, and we ask that you please limit your comments to no more than three minutes. Thank you for your input. So I'm just flipping over to the attendees, and we'll give it a moment to see if anybody raises their hand to speak. I do see a hand raised for a person named Kimba. Dr. Branco, could you allow this person to speak?
You are all set to go.
Kimba, I believe that you're muted.
Is that better?
That's better, yep.
Okay, great. Sorry about that. My name is actually Kim Dias, and I live at 34 Willowdale Road in Tingsboro. And I've lived in Tingsboro for about 11 to 12 years. And my concerns in Tingsboro right now are regarding the mask mandates and the possible vaccine mandates. Is that okay to speak of this now?
Yes, please do.
Okay, thank you. So my concerns with the mask mandates, and I'm sure a lot of other people have these same concerns, is that in the human body, as everyone knows, physiology, we have respirations. A respiration is a breath in and a breath out. The breath in is the oxygen, the breath out is the carbon dioxide. And that exchange happens, of course, in our lungs. When anyone, whether it be children or adults, don't have that proper exchange happening, that brings a lot of lung problems, like COPD, emphysema, and it also brings lungs are not as healthy as they should be because they're not having that constant replenishing of the oxygen. So my concern with these kids sitting in class all day with masks on, that their their quality of life is being threatened because they don't have the oxygen that they need to survive as children. And in terms of the mask mandates, I mean, I'm sorry, the vaccine mandates, I believe that being mandated is not fair and it's not constitutional. But beyond that, it's a crime against humanity. No one should ever tell us that we have to get a vaccine. That should be up to a person individually, and they should have the right to decide for themselves and their children what they put in their bodies. And these present vaccines, now, I'm not an anti-vaxxer, don't get me wrong. I've been vaccinated. I was in the healthcare field. I got all my vaccines, you know, to work in the healthcare field. My children, they all had their vaccines as well. So I'm not an anti-vaxxer, so don't get me wrong on that. What I'm saying is
Thirty seconds.
This vaccine has not been proven enough, and there is far too many deaths that are happening right after the vaccine is done, even in young people and older people, everybody in between. That needs to be looked at. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. We'll open up public comment for anybody else that would like to speak. If you would like to speak, please raise your hand within the Zoom meeting. We'll give it a moment to make sure that everybody has an opportunity. I don't see any other hands at the moment. Give it just one more moment, make sure that we're not having any technical difficulty from anybody else. Okay, that will conclude public comments. I haven't seen any other hands raised. And we will move on to the next agenda point. Yep, item number four, correspondence. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to provide an update. I did receive an opinion from, let me rephrase that, we received guidance from MAS, Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents about the federal vaccine mandate. Just to clarify that, I know there's been some questions out there and some concerns out there. But basically, the emergency temporary standard under OSHA's guidance requires private employers, who have more than 100 employees, to mandate vaccines by January 4th. Additionally, any state that has an approved OSHA plan, an approved OSHA state plan with more than 100 employees is also required to have vaccinations for all employees by January 4th. Massachusetts is not subject to this. We have our own OSHA board. Now, that doesn't mean that there isn't going to be some mandate that comes down from Massachusetts, but as legislation's written right now, is our belief that Massachusetts Public Schools do not, this does not apply to them, the vaccine mandate. There will be further guidance coming at some point, but to curb any discussion about it right now, we are not in a position as Massachusetts Public School, we have to act on this vaccine mandate at this point. If Governor Baker makes a different decision, then so be it. We'll have to see what comes out from that. But at this time, the federal vaccination mandate for employers with more than 100 employees does not apply to public schools in Massachusetts. I just want to clarify that. Again, things could change, but that's where we are as of today. So I did receive that guidance. Our US School Attorney, Mike Wong, believes additional guidance will come from DSE, and when it does, Wong in the Peter's office will certainly weigh in, and I'll bring that information back to the committee. But just wanted to get that information out there for the community. And that's all I have, correspondence.
Thank you, Dr. Flanagan. Moving on to item number five, Personnel. We have a notification of resignation from Mary Thibodeau, which is a THS Second Shift Custodian, and a notification of request for adoption leave for Amy Terry, a TES teacher, as well as you both. Moving on to Share the Success, we'll hand it over to Grace.
All right, so at TES, students made cards of gratitude and recognition for Veterans Day. Chris Derry collected over 800 heartfelt messages and delivered them to the VA last week. The annual fundraising efforts to support adoptive family are in full swing. In October, TES raised over $500, and the generosity has continued with donations for the food and the coin drive. Next month, TES will be hosting virtual parent guardian conferences. The conferences are designed to provide families with a brief update on their child's academic, social, and emotional performance. The conferences will be scheduled for approximately 10 to 15 minutes, and they're a great opportunity to further enhance the homeschool connection with families. An update for the middle school will be presented later during the TMS reopening presentation. And then at THS, the National Honor Society recently inducted 32 new members, and theater put on a great performance of The Lightning Thief. The cheer team won the Mid-Watch Division III Championship and placed second at regionals. And the Save a Life Tour was, Save a Life Tour visited on Friday, which included a presentation video and simulators on distracted and impaired driving. Final exams will take place November 22nd to the 24th, and trimester two will begin on Monday, November 29th.
Thank you, Grace. Moving on to item number seven, which is our Subcommittee Update. We will be hearing an update on the Policy Subcommittee a little later on in the meeting in Section 9B from Jeff Bo and Dr. Flanagan. But at this time, we'll open it up to Mr. Mullin to provide a brief update on the Capital Asset Subcommittee Meeting.
Good evening. Last Wednesday, the Capital Asset Subcommittee had its first meeting of the year. We came together a little bit earlier this year for two reasons. One is that the Capital Asset Subcommittee is going to be asked to vet all requests through the coming from the ARP funding. There are several plans in place, projects that have been discussed, one of which we discussed that evening, the others will be coming at a later date. The other reason that we were asked to come together is that the Police Department is in a desperate position right now to replace a couple of their cruisers. The last two that they ordered last year have not come in. Going through regular channels, they believe that they have the ability to gain two more at this time that they very much needed, so the first year's payment on those would be covered by the ARP fund. So we did discuss and approve moving forward with those funds to purchase them at this time. The large project presented that evening is a half-million-dollar project, which encompasses emergency communications, regular communications for both the Police Department and fire and ambulance, upgrading their systems, which are currently running on copper, and do tend to fail occasionally. There are also several dead spots within the town that unfortunately are not covered at this point by upgrading the system, by putting in a brand-new system using both radio frequency waves and also using fiber optics to connect all of the buildings in town to set up repeaters throughout the town. This would eliminate all of the dead spots in town and make for a much better communications process for them. One of the items that was brought up that evening by the Chief of Police was that this would also benefit the schools by bringing the fiber optics to all of the school buildings. That would include the Norris Road Campus, the elementary school, and connecting them with the the emergency buildings and with Town Hall. So, and they believe that the capacity from past conversations with the School Department, although I've found out had a discussion with Superintendent since then, and I know he was looking into this to make sure that there's enough capacity for all of us to use these fiber optics. It would be a great benefit. And the one thing that I had a little bit of an issue with is, it seemed to be, it's a very large project with still a whole lot of questions. And putting it in context to the overall ARP funding that the town will be receiving, I believe we've received about about $3 billion so far. The making a decision on a $500,000 project this early in the process is a little difficult without knowing what other projects are planned, and so we're gonna, we're gonna delay that just a little bit. Discuss, discussing further on that one and getting a better idea of where that project is and what the real true costs are and the benefits for every department in town. Our next meeting, let me bring that up, is January 4th. And that is, if we do not have any other emergencies that come up before then, that's our next regularly scheduled meeting. We will start to look at the regular capital asset requests and ranking those, deciding which ones are more important than others, or just deciding which ones are the most important ones. And I can answer any questions if anyone has any.
Rob, this is Becky, more of just a request when you speak to the Capital Asset Subcommittee, when it's appropriate, if you could speak about the need for the playground as well.
Yeah, that would be at the next meeting, and actually, we need to meet as a board and have a discussion on our items before bringing them to the Capital Asset Committee as a whole and ranking them. We have not had that yet. I was hoping that we'd have that by the December, on our December meeting. And I see Superintendent Flanagan shaking his head in the affirmative. So that's when we'll have our discussion on where we believe is the, our items that we believe are most important. And yes, we'll also, we'll have a discussion about the playground equipment. I'm assuming that's probably number one on our list at this point.
Yes. Yes. So we left off on the five-year plan. It's been on the five-year plan for three years at this point, and certainly, given that it was failing last year and dangerous last year, we had to remove it, and it's certainly something that is our top priority, capital asset wise. And I think we all agree to that.
Absolutely.
Great.
Are there any other questions for Rob about capital assets? All right, thanks, Rob.
Thank you.
We can move on to item number eight, which is unfinished business. Dr. Flanagan?
Thank you. Dr. Branco will bring up the slide deck for us now. Perfect. Don't move to the next slide, please, Mark. Great. So, so we'll start by talking about last night's meeting, the MSBA being kind of giving everyone overview where we were. We had a great community forum last night. We had, there were probably, you know, 40 people out in the audience. I would say 20 of them were board members and elected officials in the community, but there were a decent number of parents there to really understand where we are with the project. That meeting from last night has since been added to our homepage, has been added to the Middle School Building Construction page, and I did tweet it out this afternoon, so it's out there in the social media universe. But I think one of the things I want to do tonight is really talk about some of the highlights from last night, some of the questions that came up, just so we can again get out there in front of it and make sure that the message is clear and heard around some of the misconceptions or misbeliefs about this project. One of the things I think we need to understand is that MSBA requires that we build or that we design and approve a 50-year building. They want to understand that, they want to know that there is a school that can change if it needs to in 20 or 30 years. Certainly, it needs to have flexible learning space. It needs to be able to grow with the demographics in the community. And one of the questions that specifically came up last night was about enrollment. Just so we're all clear, currently, there are just under 400 students at the Tingsboro Middle School. This project is designed for 480 students. We performed a longitudinal study that's been approved and vetted by MSBA that says our enrollment is going to grow to about 480 students within the next 10 years. So we need to be forward-thinking as we design this project. So we're designing a school for 480 students, even though we currently only have 400, because within 10 years, it's going to happen. This school that we are designing also protects our middle school model. That's part of our educational plan. This community made a decision in 2001 to go from Tingsboro Junior Senior High School to Tingsboro Middle School and Tingsboro High School. As a matter of fact, Jeff Rodd, the Commissioner of Education, was our first principal for Tingsboro Middle School. And we developed the model of two, four-person teams, four content area teams. Currently, we have a four-person team and a two-person team, just given our enrollment. But when the enrollment goes back up, we're going to protect that middle school model because it's a foundational belief in this community. Another conversation that we heard, a question we heard loudly last night was, you know, we thought we were getting 58% of the total cost reimbursed. That's not the case. We are getting 58%, that's our reimbursement rate from MSBA, 58% reimbursed of reimbursable costs. What are reimbursable costs? All this information, by the way, is available on our webpage, but the total cost of the project is projected about, and this is gonna move this number, it's about $81 million. Reimbursable costs are about $50 million. So it looks like we will get reimbursed about $28 million, which means the community would still be on the hook for $52 million for the total cost of the project. So MSBA will fund about $28, $29 million, and the community itself will be responsible for about $52 million, just so we're clear there. Somebody says, well, what's not reimbursable? Abatement, asbestos abatement in flooring, asbestos abatement ceiling tiles. The MSBA has a cap on what a cost per square foot for construction can be, and that's universal. That's every project that's out there on SBA pipeline has a construction cost, not just the Tingsboro. I encourage people at home to please go on and really look at what the construction costs are. I think you're going to find that we are below the regional average in every one of our costs. Our charge from the get-go has been to design, A, a building that is educationally appropriate for our students, B, do that in the most fiscally responsible manner, and working with J CJ Architecture out of Hartford, Connecticut, and certainly Leftfield, who's our OPM. I believe we've done that. Another question that came out last night, and it's important to reinforce this, is the MSBA model versus the SBA model. Tingsboro High School and Tingsboro Elementary School were built under the SBA model. What that meant was, if you designed a school and it went to a vote and it failed, you could take this out, you could modify that, you could change the square footage, you could do whatever you want, and then bring it back for a vote. Under the MSBA model, you cannot do that. You have one chance at this, at this vote, and that's it. If you, your community does not support it, within 10 days, we have, within 10 days, we have to respond to MSBA, say what our plan is going forward, and they will either approve what our plan is to revote or to go back into the pipeline or whatever the intention is at that point. But you cannot sit there and keep taking shots at votes to try to get this job, this project passed. One of the things that you'll see, and again, it's in the presentation, I encourage you to look at it, is when a school has a failed vote, the typical timeframe to get back into the MSBA pipeline used to be five to six years, but now it's creeping up on eight, nine, 10 years. So the further away it gets, the longer it takes to get back into the pipeline. So we have an opportunity in May, the community has an opportunity to vote at town meeting. It would require a two-thirds vote at town meeting, and then two weeks later, it would be a de-exclusion ballot vote, which would require a majority. So there's a ton of good information on the website. I please encourage everyone to go there. The presentation was great, the professionals are outstanding to work with. Additionally, it's, the presentation itself, it provides some really great graphics as to what the potential could be in the school. And I think if you can see and envision what the cafeteria looks like, what the heart of the school looks like, what the heart of the classroom neighborhoods look like, some of the collaborative working spaces, it really is exciting to see. So I encourage everyone to please go on there and visit. And again, our meetings, we meet twice a month. We have upcoming meetings December 1st and December 15th. I would encourage anyone who has any questions to come on out and be part of those meetings, and/or at any point, please feel free to send me an email. I'll be happy to respond. So I think it's important that we continue to get the message out about this project. The vote is six months, six months away at this point, and we're at the very end of refining what the actual design will look like, and that'll happen over the next month or so. So it's an exciting time. There's a lot of work that has been done. There's a lot of work still ahead, and I'm just happy to be a part of it. So I'm happy to answer any questions about the MSBA project at this point, if I can, from any of the committee members.
Dr. Flanagan, I have a question. With the construction and material costs fluctuating so wildly over the last year, is the MSBA adjusting what they're allowing for a cost per square foot for reimbursable costs?
Great question. So they did increase what they allowed for, so they did increase what they allowed for cost per square foot. However, I think another thing became ineligible for reimbursement. So it's a sliding scale on both sides. That's definitely a David Sanding question that I can actually get the answer for, a better answer than what I provided, Ryan. But it's certainly something that we have talked about throughout the process. Any other questions?
Dr. Flanagan, I'd just like to add to a couple of things that you said. As a member of the School Building Committee, you know, we do talk, we do talk a lot about that 58% reimbursement. And from day one, we've known that the 58% reimbursement is of eligible reimbursable costs. So, you know, that, that doesn't necessarily include everything, but we've tried to work with the designers and the project manager to find every way that we can make whatever we possibly can eligible for reimbursement. We've challenged different designs, different, different heating systems, cooling systems, to try to find the most cost-effective solution that will meet the educational programming for our committee, for our community, sorry. And, you know, I'll make the same offer that Dr. Flanagan made if any members of our community have any questions and would like to discuss or, you know, find out more beyond what they can find on our website. Feel free to reach out to me. My Tingsboro Public Schools email is available on the Tingsboro Public Schools website. I'm happy to answer any questions, as I'm sure any members of the Tingsboro Middle School Building Project Committee are.
The final plug I'll make, because if you have an hour, I mean, that's what the community forum was. It was like an hour and three minutes. If you have an hour, it's worth watching it just to make sure you're familiar with what's going on and where we are in the process. It really is, it's an hour well spent, I would say. Nothing else there. We'll move on. So TPS Dashboard Update, just so we can see, the high school, first, we'll look at the graph on the left here. We can see that the vaccination rate at the high school is making progress. We're at 71% vaccinated at the high school. We're 45 individuals away. There are currently 14 individuals who are partially vaccinated. Now, whether that means they had a first dose within the past month or six months ago and they fell out of the process and went up to restart, I don't have that information. But even though all 14 of those were to become fully vaccinated, that would push our percentage to just over 73%. So we are ticking along at the high school in terms of reaching that, you know, 80% threshold. And that also assumes that that 80% threshold stays there. That target may move. So, you know, right now, it's a goal, and we continue to get work towards that goal, but I don't know where that, the goalposts are going to stay on that or not. Middle school, you can see where we are for percentages, and certainly, there's a long way to go in terms of getting closer to that 80% threshold. But, um, but, you know, I think I'm going to jump ahead to the next part, the MAS, MAS-C Joint Conference. Last week, there was a joint conference, and Dr. Branco and Mr. Mullin both participated in it. But I think one of the things that was made clear at this conference was the opening salvo by the Commissioner, who said that the mask mandate is going to be extended through January 15th. At some point, soon thereafter, it will be up to local boards to make decisions. So we're not there yet, but it's something that this committee is going to have to start thinking about in terms of, you know, when do we start thinking? you know, when do we start thinking about what mask mandates look like and in what direction do we go? Now, I know right now, this is, this is a high level number of fifty thousand feet. Right now, we're not even showing you what the positivity rate is in the town, what we've had for positive cases in the last fourteen days. All that information we used last year isn't incorporated in this. But if the committee would like me to do some homework and come back with some more statistics and data for our December meeting, so we can at least understand where we are, you know, better, better picture with more, more data points to really understand it a little bit better. I, I can certainly do that. So I'm happy to have that conversation with the committee. And the last thing I want to put on this slide before I answer questions on the slide is thrilled, thrilled about our test of the state program. Since September twenty-ninth, we've performed five hundred and thirty-five tests of in-school close contacts. We've had three positives. But we've also been able to protect a school day for five hundred and thirty-two kids. So that's five hundred and thirty-two school days out protected in the district since the implementation of this program. That's great. You can see, just thinking about September twenty-ninth, where we are now, three hundred and forty-six of those tests were performed in the last eleven days of school. So that kind of gives you a sense of where we are as a school community. So we've, we have had, yeah, that's right, eleven days of school, three hundred and forty-six. So we're averaging over thirty-one tests a day at this point going forward. So test and stay has been a, a, a real success for us in terms of protecting students, keeping them in school. And we're very fortunate that we have this program. We thank Dussie for, for rolling this up. So I'll happy to answer any questions, but any information on this slide or actually wouldn't mind a little guidance and direction from the committee in terms of what you think you'd like to see, if anything, for December.
Dr. Flannigan, in, in light of what was said by the Commissioner of Education with January fifteenth or sometime thereafter, would it be possible for you to put together some potential options for how we might roll out or roll back the mask mandate? I think I would prefer to get ahead of this and to have a plan for going forward. I don't want to drop this on families and say, you know, next week or in two weeks, there, we're, you know, making changes to the mask requirements. I'd like to give them as much notice as possible. Because people may choose to take action, whatever that action may be. I'd like to give them as much lead time as possible and potentially discuss some of this at our next meeting and what a role, what a rollback would look like.
Yeah, so, so I certainly can do that. I guess, I guess my question back through you, Madam Chair, to the entire committee is just tell me what data you want to see that's going to impact your decision. Is it something that? I, I need to know more what you would like to see. I could, I can absolutely come up with a plan and put dates in there and kind of tease it up. But I also don't want to be put on the spot on December saying, well, what's this number? What's that number? So any information I can get to give you to inform a decision, I think is, is important.
Can we think about it and send you an email?
Absolutely. That's fine.
So if we can plan to give Dr. Flannigan, get to him a week ahead of time, is that enough time, Dr. Flannigan?
Yeah, unless we're doing the policy one as well on that same date. So if you can give me the information by December first and maybe, because we're going to talk about policy by December seventh. So if we can shoot for anyone who, whatever data point you would like to see, if you can send me an email before December first, then I can start tackling that and then December seventh, get back to the policy. I think that makes sense, if that is amenable to everyone.
That's great.
So just to clarify, you want to see what a potential schedule with options of rolling back masks, timeframes, calendar, what makes sense campus-wise, grade level?
Yeah, and well, and that's the thing. So is it, is it by building? Is it across the board? Is it by grades? Is it? What does that look like? What are some, what are you hearing out there in the industry? I know you are very connected with other superintendents in other districts. What could it look like for Tingsborough? So Tingsborough is its own community. You know, we're not Westford, we're not Lowell, we're Tingsborough. And so what could it look like for Tingsborough?
Okay.
And just because I think that could, you know, maybe two or three different options on it so that we can use that as, as a discussion point.
Yeah, so let me come back with, with several, several options and variations and we can have better conversation about it.
Right.
All right. So I'll plan for that for December then.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yep. All right, moving on to the next slide. Mr. Pollitt.
Oh, well, hello, everybody. Glad to be here with you. And I think we're really glad to be back at school. Regardless of some of the restrictions we have on us, the teachers and the kids have done a really good job adapting to, to our re-entry, although we are still working on some of those back-to-school routines, life from the, from the home and then from six feet apart has, has changed a little bit. We have spent a lot of time outside, but which has been, which has been great. But the video that Dr. Branko has queued up, ready to go, I think does a really good job of showing the enthusiasm and the excitement about being at school. And some of those focus areas, I'll give you a little background. When tasked with this activity, I figured I was not the best person to talk about it. I thought our kids were the best people to talk about it. With a lot of help organizing, but not as much editing as I thought. Tim Doust really left it to the kids to do. And so you got about nine minutes of pure middle school around the Halloween timeframe. So sit back and enjoy, and then I'll talk with you after we get back. Well, hey, welcome to the TMS back-to-school video. I'm Chris Pollitt. I'm the principal here at Tingsborough Middle School. We're filming this actually a couple of days before Halloween. And it seems appropriate that we would do that as we're talking about the middle school. We have some really wonderful kids. We're excited to have them back this year. Even though we're wearing masks, it's working out really, really well, welcoming the sixth graders in from the elementary school. They're having a great year from what I see. We've started a number of activities after school that have included probably eighty to ninety kids a Tuesday and Thursday. And it just seems that it's really making this place feel a little bit more normal. I'm not going to do very much with this video. This is probably all you're going to see of me unless I get into a few pictures, but I'm going to turn this over to the experts. The experts are our production teams of sixth, seventh, and eighth graders who are going to put together the rest of this video, and I'm very excited for that. With the help of Mr. Doust, who's always willing to help, and the willingness of the kids to help, enjoy the video.
Although we practice all six core values, collaboration and perseverance are the two that we as sixth graders feel represent us most. Going from elementary school to middle school is a big change. Oftentimes, it can feel like we're all on our own, and that can be overwhelming with so many changes. TMS sixth grade has taught us to work with one another and lean on one another to divide and conquer. We are stronger because we collaborate. This is quite possibly one of the biggest transitions in our life. On top of that, there's schoolwork, quizzes and tests, and just simply growing up. Learning to face the challenges we have head-on and push through them teaches us the value of perseverance. So welcome to the sixth grade. We decided to meet up with Mrs. Leonard and Mrs. Pachoski Lewis, teachers from the two sixth-grade teams, to ask them how coming back to school has been and what they think the biggest differences are between fifth grade and sixth grade.
I think overall, the sixth graders are happy to be back in school.
The ability to come to school every day and the consistency of trying to get back into the routine, that in and of itself for the sixth grade is such a tremendous thing. It's so awesome. There are so many things that are different, an A day and a B day schedule.
So being able to get up and just transition from class to class and make sure you guys have all your belongings.
A new school building, different time of day. You guys come to school at an earlier time.
Yep, but you guys have all been doing great with it.
Now it's time to ask the experts, the sixth graders. One place we can really be ourselves is in the lunchroom. It's a great place for us to connect with our friends and get the scoop. Pun not intended. Let's see what the kids think.
How's it been coming back to school after being fully remote?
I think it's really cool because when I come back to school, I get to see all my friends.
The biggest difference between fifth and sixth grade is that we have more freedom.
Although all the core values are important, the ones that represent the most are originality and respect. Seventh grade can feel like no one notices us, all the while trying to find ourselves and ultimately where we fit in.
As seventh graders, we're always working on being original, making our mark, getting noticed and defining ourselves. Part of the way we define ourselves is through respect. This is our second year here, and we've both earned respect and have become adult enough to realize we must give it.
So welcome to seventh grade. We've decided to meet up with Mr. Penegast and Mr. Robinson, teachers from two seventh-grade teams, to ask them how coming back to school has been for the seventh graders and how to guide seventh graders towards finding their own originality.
The kids here are excited. They're like willing to do anything. They're like getting outside or getting up or moving around. So that's really, 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 really cool.
There's a lot of ways to do that. Whatever they're comfortable with doing, if they want to express themselves verbally, if they want to draw a picture, like in some of the word work we do, just try to make them feel comfortable in that whatever they're good at is what we're looking for.
Just encouraging students to keep taking risks and like trying new things so that they find their, you know, their original voice.
So I really like reading kids, writing to them so that they can hear that they have a writing voice. Because they might not have even known they had it.
Let's see what the kids think.
Alex, what's your favorite UA?
Well, my favorite UAs are, I especially, I especially like having it in the morning. It's a very nice relaxing thing when I get to school. What's your favorite UA?
I like CompSci. The teacher's much warm. I like it a lot because it's a pretty chill class. We get to make things, like code things, and then make them in real life and get to play them after. Which is really fun because you basically get to play games that you made yourself.
What's your favorite? What's your favorite?
Um, this year, so far that I've had this year, I really like Spanish. I've, I've seen one in an office. Because it's interesting to learn about, it's interesting to learn about another language.
As eighth graders, we practice all our core values, but the ones we felt represent us the most are independence and responsibility. As eighth graders, we take on the roles as leaders to the seventh and sixth graders, being role models, but also taking on many new responsibilities that prepare us for high school. To do this, we're given more freedom where we really get to practice our independence and form our understanding behind the value of independence. It's never easy, but we have our peers, teachers, administration, and guidance counselors, as well as our core values from our sixth and seventh grade years in our tool belt. We sat down with the teachers from the two eighth-grade teams, Mrs. Downey and Mr. Maslanka, to ask them how they prepare eighth graders for high school, what makes the eighth-grade experience unique, and how this year stands out.
One of the things I do is we have been allowed to give homework this year, which is different from previous years. And there are studies that support math homework in general. And being a math and science teacher, I'm all for that. You definitely see a difference when they, when kids are able to go home and practice the concept, encouraging good study habits and keeping them accountable and providing some structure.
Eighth graders are the oldest ones in this building. You are expected to model the expectations, what we want students in this building to do, take that leadership role, execute, be responsible, take initiative. It's also unique in that this is your last year together for a lot of you. Many other options out there for high schools, since this is that unique last hurrah together. We're hoping to get some good things back on the road like D C and some other fun end-of-the-year activities for you guys to have a great send-off.
TMS offers a multitude of different sports.
Soccer, basketball.
Football, cross-country.
And a field hockey.
Now let's head down to the lunchroom to hear from the lunch kids.
So Link, I know you were full remote last year. So what's it like now that we're like back in school full-time?
I mean, like going back from being full remote, it was like kind of scary because I wouldn't know where my classes were. It's like, well, I haven't been in school for like a whole year. But like figuring it out is pretty easy because like you just go to your locker, like your teachers, hey, where is this? And they tell you, yeah, it's like all kind of close together.
Do you feel like you're learning better now that you're in school instead of remote?
I mean, I, I would say so. Since when I was full remote, I had a bunch of distractions around me, like seeing my phone, food, the computers. Anything I could get distracted by was there. But in school, you can't really bring that stuff. You can't bring like a whole PC to school.
As we end our journey to the Tingsborough Middle School, we hope you walk away with better insight of what our lives are like. We love it here, and we hope you enjoyed our video. So long.
So we'll have the extended version of that on the website. Mr. Doust and Mr. Milne will work on that. It was, I mean, it's, it's a little harder to, it's pretty inspiring, some of the comments that the kids made. And I love the way Velves ended the whole presentation with just, we love, we love this school. And talking with the school council last night, we had, we had our meeting. And to a person, kids were, I mean, parents were saying their kids were just so excited to be back in school, really didn't have a bad thing to say about it. I'm sure they have quietly said some things, but they were just excited. They recognized the importance of, of working hard and just, and trying to get through the, the activities each day. So we've limited homework this year a little bit. What we've tried to do is build our activities and lessons into that fifty to fifty-five minute block. And anything that students aren't able to finish, that's to do at home. There are some, you know, long-term things that we're, we're working on as far as preparation for quizzes and tests and different projects. But we've been working on a homework philosophy, just or at least an at-home philosophy. What we found in certainly the last eighteen months and certainly this year, we found that kids are pretty exhausted. And another piece that we, one of our goals this year is to really expand our extracurricular activities, as I alluded to at the beginning of it. The number of kids who are staying after school for extra help in some cases or for the different activities, met a couple of them of their own design. We had forty kids playing volleyball just because they wanted to create a volleyball club. Incredible numbers of kids staying after school, which is, you know, Dr. Flannigan, Dr. Branko, and I talked about this last year about how quiet the campus was under those circumstances. It really isn't right now, and it's, it's a good noise. It's good excitement. Middle school is really that time where you have that opportunity to try some things out that you may not ever try again. And with the support of you guys and with the support of the community, we have a very comprehensive program in our school and a lot of different offerings. And the kids really do flourish and try new things and exciting things. And the video is a prime example of that. And also, if you look at my weekly email, if you get that, and they did an anti-vaping video on there that was completely their own design. Highly recommend you check it out. So they're doing some great things there. To see the theater class, oh, speaking of which, tomorrow night and Thursday night is our short play or one-act play at the high school that I've had a chance to kind of watch them perform in, in, in our auditorium. They're going to do it at the high school the next two nights, which they're very excited about. That has been a challenge, still trying to keep our three feet and keeping our masks up and all that good stuff. They're doing a great job. But it's, it's been, it's just been a really vibrant school after a very quiet year and a bit exhausting for some of the adults at times, but it's been, it's been, it's been a really good start to the year. So what can I answer for you all?
Mr. Pollitt, I don't have any questions. I just have some observations. I loved seeing the smiles even underneath the masks. You can see it just in this part of their face. And you can, you can just see them even, I was paying attention more to the background picture of the pictures of the kids being kids. That was great to see. And just really impressive how they put that video together. That, that's amazing. Mr. Doust does some great work with these students and these students work real hard. And then the last thing I was noticing more back- Um, and then the last thing I was noticing more background is how tight those classrooms are. Um, and yet, you know, we don't hear about it all the time. They, they love going to school. They love the middle school. But those were some tight looking classrooms in there.
Now, we, uh, the challenge, we went to each room, Jim and I, Mr. Hook and I did and measured each room to make sure we're at the proper distance. The challenge we have is as classes move now, they come in and they sit and they're moving chairs closer and closer together. So I've kind of worked with the teachers to say, uh, if you could reformat your room at the end of a class or have the kids rearrange your stuff. One of the things we also found is after last year, when they had all their materials in the room with them that they were unfortunately stuck in for the year, they got pretty, uh, pretty comfortable with that. And they did a better job of keeping their area kind of organized and clean. Believe it or not, I know that's middle school, but it's, they've been really pretty good at it. And we've seen a lot, a lot less, uh, need for the locker use. They can put their bigger things in there, but they're carrying small bags or backpacks and it's not, uh, a huge issue for us as far as, one of the concerns we had is just navigating a classroom with all that stuff in there. They've done a pretty good job with that. So it is tight. I mean, the, the rooms themselves are extremely small. Um, as you know, as being on the building committee with, with me, um, it, it's one of our biggest concerns, you know, is that we have small classrooms for much bigger people than we ever did at one time. And, and all, and under these circumstances, we're trying to be pretty vigilant with, you know, this, that concept of close contacts. If you, you've heard Dr. Flanagan say a number of times, how many kids you see in the hallways, working in the halls. And teachers have been pretty good about, uh, and, and certainly that we as administrators walking around, making sure that they're, they're keeping their distance, but they're still able to work collaboratively because we're trying to focus a great deal on teaching and learning this year and not so much all the mandates and the, uh, you know, we constantly are doing the note, you know, chin to nose with the mask and all that, that piece. And I'm sure you saw in some of the pictures, some kids struggled getting it up over their nose. That's an ongoing battle. Um, and it's not, and, and they, they've become a lot better. They're much better with the routines. I actually remarked, believe it or not, that I might've seen the cleanest cafeteria auditorium after the eighth grade lunch yesterday that I've seen since I started here. They were remark, it was remarkable. And that wasn't due to anything other than them actually cleaning up after themselves. So that, you know, I think it's just going to be our challenge as long as we're under these restrictions to keep that in mind throughout all of, you know, all the process. But the kids have really responded well.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Pollitt?
I don't have a question, Chris. I just want to say what a great job on the video. You know, not that we don't want to hear from you, the other administrators, but we really love hearing from the kids. You know, years past, we had the kids in front of us, but I think this actually opened it up. We got to see even more of the school than the four or five, you know, students who show up. Um, so, you know, I really did enjoy this format. So thank you.
I'm just curious how the no homework policy is going. Do the kids like it? Do the teachers like it? Do they feel like they need that extra instruction in the afternoon or do they feel like it's going well? Just some feedback on that, I guess.
So I wouldn't say it's a no homework policy. It's, it's more of a, you know, what I need kind of experience. So in my draft of my, you know, of, of the, the policy, it's more, it's not even policy procedure, whatever. It's more about recognizing the work that kids are doing each day. What happens as, as you know, I mean, is that kids will get homework, you know, in the past and it would linger for weeks. And then you would have to go back and do it. And it really had no relevancy to what you were doing at the given time. And it was more of a check the box kind of thing as opposed to really assisting very. Um, I think you heard Denise talk a little bit about, you know, practice. And we want to make sure that we talk about practicing certain skills. So there is math that they are taking with them, things that don't necessarily, that, that are not easily finished in a day. And, uh, in that school day, we have blocks in the day also are what I need block for some of that, you know, organizational stuff and preparation for, for the, the bigger tests and quizzes. But that's the other piece is that we're teaching them kind of Justin and part of his interview, which you'll, if you watch the whole video, which I think is in your, in your, uh, Google Drive. He talks about that Thursday afternoon, Thursday quiz or something that they're, they know it's coming on Monday and setting it, you know, setting up a routine and timeframe for them to prepare for that. That's probably as important as doing, you know, 10 math problems or reading, um, half an hour. I, we're, we're building in independent reading in our school day. We're doing, I think, a lot of those things that we did outside of school that may not, I mean, that we put parents and kids in this position where they were, you know, kind of doing reteaching of themselves and of their kids, you know? And that, I think that we're finding they're more successful and more prepared with this model so far, you know? Do, are we still going to run into kids who are, who are struggling to keep, keep, uh, everything organized and up to speed? Yeah. And that we've built, I think, a few things in and we have, we've changed our, uh, our, our after-school to an academic club. And I think kids are coming in for a lot more extra help and preparation for those on the days that they can come in. And, uh, teachers are, I think, using that much more directly than, okay, you're sitting and doing work. You're now sitting and getting assistance and you're preparing for the things you need to do. So, uh,
So it's more like a, a modified, you know, make the homework matter more than just be busy work?
Yeah, we're, and I'm, and I'm trying to say work at home, you know, because, you know, the homework, the model, the, the, the term homework has what we experienced when we were in school as opposed to, you know, uh, the work that you have to do. And we work, and with the other piece with parents, we've been very clear to say, little Chris really didn't use his time as wisely or he got off task and he needs to finish this at home. And there, I think that communication line's open and a great deal of it, as you know, is on Google Classroom. So kids are being a little bit more responsible. We're finding far fewer kids lagging behind on that daily work.
No, it was great seeing all the kids. They did a great job.
Chris, can you just talk briefly for me about, um, the gaps in learning and how you're, um, dealing with that this year? Just curious, you know, since last year was so different.
Yeah, um, it's interesting that term learning loss that everybody was talking about. You know, Dr. Brink did a great job. You can't lose something that you didn't have. And, uh, sorry to quote you there, Mark, but, uh, it, it is, it is kind of true. And what we find is we're adapting some of, you know, kids just weren't exposed to certain standards and things that they were, typically being, uh, prepared with. And our teachers have done a lot of backfilling to start. But what we're also finding is where we may have had to spend time preparing kids using some of the tools that we use in classes. They're very able, not only technology, but just collaboration. You know, we got over the hump of that in-person collaboration that they were more used to doing virtually. They have done a really good job being much more productive. So I, I think there's a little bit of momentum going now as far as just getting, getting back into the swing of routine in school, which has allowed teachers to move a little quicker in certain areas. I think we're, you know, we're going to, in talking with Jeff and certainly talking with Carrie, I, I think the next level is going to have to continue to, you know, kind of do some backfilling. But I, I, I feel, I mean, our teachers have done a really good job prioritizing and still being able to do things to a level of depth, you know, that we want them to. And we've also learned that there, there may be some things that we spent a lot of time on that are not necessarily as essential as we would have thought in the past. So are there going to be what we would perceive as gaps to some extent? Yes. And I think over the next year or so, we'll be able to fill those gaps. At the same time, we're learning that our kids are pretty darn resilient and they've gained some skills that they never would have gained, you know, uh, that in the past. So it's kind of a double edged sword in some respects. This is presented a lot of problems, but we've found a lot of successes as well. So that's a great, great question.
Great. And that's a really good point. I'm sure they have gained some amazing skills that you didn't, you know, no one could have predicted, you know?
Yeah. And appreciation for things that they never may have appreciated in the past either. So.
That's so true. Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pollitt. And if you could, uh, share our appreciation to Mr. Doust and the students behind that video. Um, it's very impressive.
I will do so right after I get off.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you all. Thanks.
Thank you.
Moving on to item nine B, which is, uh, the first read of section A and B of the, um, new policy manual. I'll hand it over to Dr. Flanagan and Jeff Bo to discuss that.
I'll defer to Jeff.
Hey, great. Thanks, Peggy. Um, so the policy subcommittee was able to meet to walk through sections A and B, which all school committee members, I believe, have in their drive at this point with, um, basically some, some updates that we did have an opportunity to go through, um, in order to make our policies really a little bit more updated and make a point of ensuring that there are true policies that are not having any type of procedural steps involved in them. In order to, um, just really make sure that we're, we're really in a, in a really clean spot. One of the things that we, I would like to ask that each of the committee members is able to take a really good thorough look through the policies that from A and B, second A and B, um, over the coming week or two, um, and be able to have any questions, comments, concerns addressed towards Dr. Flanagan prior to, I believe, uh, prior to December 7th. So if there's any, anything that Dr. Flanagan does need to address and, and bring back to the committee, um, he has, has some time to, to go through that and, um, you know, in some detail and provide good answers back to us. Um, Dr. Flanagan, if there was anything you wanted to add to that?
No, that's great. Thank you. I'll just, I'll just provide a little context for those who are watching at home. Um, you know, I think, uh, I think the committee is certainly aware because the committee approved this, this move several months ago, uh, that we would consult or contract with, uh, MASC, Massachusetts Association of School Committee to really update our policy manual. And I think, I think, you know, one of the things I've learned, uh, working with Dorothy Presser, who was the field consultant from MASC, is that, um, the, the flow of our policy book, uh, isn't as tight as it could be. I think, you know, and, and that's to be expected when you have well-intended committee members who, who serve on the policy committee. It changes every couple of years. Um, members come off, members come on. I think everyone has a little bit different way of doing things. Uh, but from a 10,000 foot view, you know, we should have policies that are global enough that protect us under Massachusetts general law and provide enough guidance that, that coincide with Massachusetts general law to, to really operate a school district. And that's one of the, that's going to be the most primary function of the school committees to establish policy. So what we did was we looked at the MASC model policy template. And if you go online and look at the MASC online manual, you'll see that over 130 districts in the state, uh, use this manual. They all refine it a little bit and customize it a little bit to their community. Uh, but globally speaking, the policies are the policies that, that are, are jive with Massachusetts general law. Uh, I think one of the things that we found specific to our policy book was there were a lot of procedures outlined and a lot of, uh, operational, uh, language in there, which as we know, becomes dated and needs to evolve. So by moving to the model policy, uh, template as identified by MASC, we know that we have updated coverage that is with the most current legal advice and practice. And it provides enough coverage and protection for the district across all operations and all aspects of the school system. I think, you know, one of the things we looked at our current policy manual is there, there are some gaps there. There's some holes there. So, uh, that was kind of the catalyst to even go in this direction, right? How do we ensure broad-based coverage for the Tinsboro Public Schools? This was absolutely the move, uh, to, to go. So in your drive tonight, you will see just a, a policy manual comparison between where we are and where we want to go. You'll see a pretty aggressive timeline to get there. Uh, we've outlined when we'd like to do a first read on every policy, give you a week or so to comment to me, uh, invite email on those policy ask questions and I can bring answers to the next meeting. And then we'll have a second read at the second meeting. So that the policy sections are systemically incorporated and adopted by, uh, this committee. So, um, happy to talk more about specific policies when we get into that. But really, uh, to Jess's point, if you could all take some time and read those policies, make sure you're familiar with them. Uh, we did Tinsboroize them to the best of our ability to make sure they fit us. Um, but I think it's an aggressive, uh, schedule and I think it's absolutely the right move for the Tinsboro Schools at this time. Madam Chair, I believe the, the policy subcommittee did support first read of A and B, unanimously earlier tonight as well.
Yes, yes, we did support it unanimously earlier tonight. Um, I would like to just point out to the committee, it's a lot of reading. So, um, with these being 100% new policies, you've not seen them in Tinsboro Public Schools before. Make sure you allow yourself plenty of time to get through them. Um, it's really important that we read every one of them and, uh, we are taking it section by section. Um, the other thing that kind of stuck out to me when we were discussing them is that they're not one-for-one policies. So, you know, there's not a specific mapping to say, you know, policy A in the new, um, policy goes to policy one in the old policies. It's not one-for-one just because we had Tinsboro Homegrown Policies. So, um, I, that's, I struggled on that just a little bit. But, um, as we, as we work through all the other sections, um, I think it will, it'll cover everything. So do we need to make a vote, Dr. Flanagan, to take them as the first read this evening?
Yes, if we accept them as the first read this evening, if, if any member has a comment, they can, or question, they can get that to me and I can bring the, the data, the backup to the next meeting. We can have conversation and then once we agree on what the languages will be, we can have a second read in December and that becomes policy of the committee. And then at the next meeting, we'll take the first read of the next sections.
I'll seek a motion, uh, for a first read on policy sections A and B.
I second. I'll make that motion?
Second it.
Motion by Julie, second by Jeff. Is there any discussion?
I just have a quick question. How many sections total are there until we get through all this? 13. 13? Okay. Thank you. Some, some longer than others. Some are short with only three policies in that subsection and some are going to have up to 19 policies in that subsection. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? I'd just like to note, I'll reach out to Tony and make sure that he's aware of this, um, since he's not here tonight.
Just a correction.
We'll take a roll call vote.
Sorry. Correction, 12 sections, not 13. A to L.
Um, Julie.
I'm sorry, what was that? I missed that.
Uh, we're taking a roll call vote.
Oh, oh, in favor. I'm sorry.
Jeff?
In favor?
Rob?
In favor?
Brian?
In favor.
And Dustine?
In favor.
And I am in favor. That carries 600. Next, I will seek a motion to release the fiscal 21 executive session minutes, which have been reviewed by legal counsel and are available in the drive.
Just a little, just a little history for you here, Madam Chair and the committee. Uh, this is something we do annually. Every year, every fall, we submit all our, uh, executive session minutes to our legal attorney. And they go through them, they redact what needs to be redacted and they make sure that they are prepped for, uh, public release. We just received them back two few, about two weeks ago, uh, which is why they're here now. So these are all your FY 21 executive session minutes.
I'll make a motion to executive session.
Motion by Julie, second by Jeff. Is there any discussion? Okay, we'll go with the roll call vote. Julie?
In favor?
Jeff?
In favor?
Rob?
In favor?
Brian?
In favor.
Dustine?
In favor.
And I am in favor. That carries 600. Thank you. Uh, moving on to section 10, Mr. Messina will hand it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, in your drive tonight for signing of bills, our bill signed on, uh, November 2nd by your single signer, Mr. Mullen. Um, also in the drive, our bill's dated today's date, November 16th. Mr. Mullen, uh, and myself will connect either tomorrow or the next day to get those approved. And for signing of payroll in the drive, uh, the payrolls of October 25th and November 6th, and the warrant numbers amounts are there in the drive. And that's it for finance tonight.
Thank you. Moving on to school committee discussion. Julie?
Um, I just want to say how much I enjoyed that, that, that presentation that Spallett put together. I love to hear the enthusiasm of the kids. You can tell they, you know, are really enjoying themselves and they're having a great year. That's good to hear. That's it.
Thanks Julie. Jeff?
I'd just like to second what Julie had said with the presentation that Mr. Pollitt came tonight with, that all the, the middle school students have put together. It was really great to see. I think we've always enjoyed the presentations, you know, when they're in person and we get to see the students there. But this was, this was definitely very unique and it showed what they're learning in their media studies. And also was able to show their enthusiasm for, for being back in school in a more normal environment and their enthusiasm in general for the learning environment. So kudos to, to our middle school students. Thank you.
Thanks Jeff. Rob?
Just to echo what Jeff and Julie already said, other than that, I don't have anything else. Thank you.
Thanks. Brian?
Again, you know, thank you, Chris, and all the students at TMS. What a tremendous video, I can't wait to see the full version. I also want to thank Dr. Flanagan and the policy subcommittee. This is a huge undertaking, converting, you know, all our policies over to this new system. So, you know, much appreciation for all the hardware that goes on behind the scenes. Also recently, I've seen a lot of our different age grouped cheerleaders have done really well in their competitions. So congratulations to them. And I know the fifth and sixth grade boys' football team won their Super Bowl and they're on to states. So congratulations to those boys and good luck. Thank you.
Dustine?
Um, I was going to echo how great it was to see the video. And it's good to see them making some academic changes that are realistic in a, in a second COVID year when kids are still transitioning. So it's good to see them making all those new policies and stuff. I also want to congratulate all the inductees into NHS. They had a beautiful ceremony at the high school the other night. It was really well done. So thank you for the teachers who put that on and put it together. It was very well done. I would also like to congratulate the different tier teams. I've heard as well that they're doing a great job and they're going on and continuing on to compete, which is great. Also, I had the opportunity to see the play over the weekend and it was such a phenomenal job. Our theater program continues to do a stellar job at production. So hopefully, if you have the time, you can go see that play that they're putting on this week. And I do believe the Festival of Trees is coming up, which would be a great opportunity for the town to come together a little bit and have a little festivities.
Thanks, Dustine. Grace, did you have anything you wanted to discuss?
I'm all set, thank you.
Mr. Messina?
Just wanted to wish everybody a happy and healthy Thanksgiving next week. Thank you.
Dr. Brinko?
All set, thank you.
Dr. Flanagan?
So Thanksgiving game is at Grotten Dunstable. It's great to see on Twitter, all the youth teams doing great. NHS induction was phenomenal. I just want to, I just want to recognize the teachers and staff of the, of the school district as well. Our teachers are working so hard right now. I know they're out straight, I know they're exhausted, and they're still pushing themselves and doing incredible things in the classroom. So thank you to them. Thank you to our powers, powers, our support staff, certainly our nurses who are out straight. It's busy, it's really busy in the schools and, and, and they're, they're up to the challenge. And they're doing such a great job, couldn't be more proud. So thank you to everyone for all the effort you're really putting in. It's, it's amazing, we really appreciate it.
And I don't have much else to add because I think most of you said it all. But I would like to just remind the community about the Adopt a Family Drive. It's a great drive that we do, we've been doing it for years. And it's Tinsbury, supporting Tinsbury. So it's, anybody would like to participate, you don't have to have someone in the school system to participate. So feel free to reach out to, who should they reach out to, Dr. Flanagan?
Are the Sarah Lewenzic or Sharon Fairbanks?
Right.
Or your building principal, principal's easy too.
With that, we have no need for executive session this evening. And so I'll seek a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion? Second.
That was a motion by Jeff, second by Ryan?
Rob.
By Rob, sorry. All right, that will require a roll call vote. Julie?
In favor?
Jeff?
In favor?
Rob?
In favor?
Brian?
In favor.
Dustine?
In favor.
And I am in favor. That carries 600, we are adjourned. Thank you.